Just get some gel, you can shake it.
I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I certainly want to welcome everybody here. I want to welcome our finance committee members who are joining us this evening. Thank you for being here. Welcoming our viewers on television. And just a little piece of housekeeping, I've been asked to ask everybody at the table to make sure that when we speak, we speak closer to our microphones. Our last meeting, I've been told, we didn't do as well as we should have. So try to remember to do that. Okay. So is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to address the school committee? Please come forward, Mr. Rivera, and identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dale Weber. I represent several bargaining units on the school committee side from the Collective Bargaining Relief Association that has the acronym of COBRA. I was here a couple of weeks ago, on the 18th of November, when Mrs. Fry put together a presentation for one of my units that I'm proud to represent, the skilled tradesmen. And we were doing job descriptions. I thank Mrs. Fry, the school committee superintendent, for getting into that process. It's been two decades since we updated the job descriptions. And we're currently working on three of the other bargaining units within the school committee to do the same thing. So on the 18th, the school committee approved job descriptions for the skilled tradesmen bargaining unit, which included the HVAC position, the electrician, the plumber, the carpenter. And also approved the update of a position that hasn't been funded, or hasn't been, I'm sorry, hasn't been filled since the early 90s. And that's the position of school painter. And that position was eliminated, I'm sorry, I keep misspeaking, it was decided not to be filled and created a vacancy back at that time when Proposition 2 and 1/2 came knocking on Plymouth's doors and the state Commonwealth's doors. And the bottom line is it was implemented in 1982 or shortly thereafter, and it was shortly thereafter that the school committee decided to make a budgetary adjustment in its budget and not fund that vacant position of school department painter in the skilled craftsman bargaining unit. So it's been vacant ever since. And in that time, the school department and its infrastructure has only grown. We currently do our best to maintain 372 acres of ball fields, landscape areas, and parking lots, as well as almost 1.5 million square feet of indoor space. So clearly, there's a need for painting in the school department. Currently, when that need is there, you do a couple of things. You solicit custodian staff to maybe do some small painting of smaller projects, or you may contract that job outside to outside contractors. So it's important to know that if you choose the first scenario that I suggested, which is sometimes custodians are solicited to assist, and we do have some good painters amongst our custodial staff, but when you prioritize, or when a building principal or a maintenance director prioritizes painting over cleaning, certain things suffer. Certain things don't get done. Certain things don't get cleaned. Certain things don't get picked up. And people shift their focus. It's important to note, from my perspective, as doing this for almost 40 years, representing the needs of the workers that we employ, it's important to note that financial discrepancies in pay have an effect to affect employee morale. So that when a custodian who, in the Plymouth school system, has an average salary of $20 an hour, is asked to do the job painting, which is the job of a skilled tradesman, which averages around $30 an hour, there's a feeling of worth that is sometimes not met. And sometimes the custodial staff feels like, you know, they should be a good team player, they should step up, and they should paint. And that's rewarding. And I know the school committee thinks that it's rewarding when they do that. The issue now comes to be that many of you have read in the town that we have somewhat of a crisis as it relates to building maintenance on the other side of government. And that has caused a spotlight to be shown on this side of government as well. You all know about that. I don't have to spend time talking about that. So if you go to the other alternative, which you do frequently, you contract out work that can't be done in-house because we don't have a tradesman that can do that job at this time, you end up being subject to the Massachusetts general law prevailing wagering. And that's just the law, that's just the way it is. And so when you do that, the average rate for a painter under the prevailing wage rates of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for new construction is almost $70 an hour, $69.96. For repainting projects, which is a lot of what is needed in the Plymouth school system, you'll end up paying $68.02 an hour for that job. So that's about 100% more than a skilled tradesman makes in the Plymouth school department. And a skilled tradesman makes about 60% more than a custodian. So the purpose for my visit tonight is just to throw those facts out on the table and urge you, as you are starting your budget deliberation processes over the next few nights, to please consider refunding the vacant position of painter under the skilled craftsman bargaining unit in the Plymouth school system. It's a win-win situation, I feel, for all. It keeps the custodians doing what custodians do. Although from time to time, if you hire one painter, there will be a need that might not be met. And you may still go to that, the two-option situation where you can ask a custodian, solicit custodians, or you can go outside to an outside contract. I think, excuse me, I think the school committee and the school jurisdiction of the spaces that you need to maintain and the 14 buildings that you do maintain could actually use a whole fleet of painters. But we have the one position that's vacant. I think it's a time that's ripe for you to look at funding that position. I can understand the reluctance to do so with, you know, unknowns on the horizon, but at the same time, I think that the community is behind the school department, the community is behind school building upkeep, school building use, and the school committee and the school department in general. I think this is a good time to consider a longstanding vacancy and the consideration to do your best to recommend funding of that. And I urge you to consider that. I thank you for your time, and if there's any questions, I can answer them. If not, good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Well spoken. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At some point, the school committee will be looking for a recommendation from Central Office on this topic, please. Any other questions or comments about that? Yes.
I just think it would be interesting to find out how much we can get, what we typically, like, over a course of, like, three to five years, have spent on average on painting, just to get a kind of ballpark.
Agreed. Let's do the accounts payable warrant now. We have two of them, and we have a grants revolving fund tonight as well. Please.
Okay. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S-120519 dated December 5, 2019, in the amount of $1,645,082.21 as presented.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Selly is the second on that motion. Are there any questions? Okay, we'll take the vote on that accounts payable warrant. And everybody has voted in favor. And now we have a grants revolving fund warrant. Ms. Hunt.
All right. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the grants and revolving funds warrant number G-120519 dated December 5, 2019, in the amount of $150,047.25 as presented.
There's the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Morgan is the second on that one. Is there a question on that motion? Okay. This is the vote on the grants revolving fund warrant. And that is also passed unanimously. Thank you for doing that, Ms. Hunt. And now we're turning the meeting over to Dr. Maestas.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Our administrators don't really have a choice, but I want to thank you anyway. This is my 12th budget presentation, and just want to let you know that it's my last. And hopefully, we can do well.
You'd rather remind us.
Yeah. All right. Sorry about that. So I'll get into the budget presentation tonight, but before that, I'd like to also mention to our finance committee, Subcommittee for Education, that we'll be setting up a meeting to review the budget in detail for members of the entire committee, whoever would like to come. That's an open meeting we've done in the past. And Mr. Halem, we would invite that opportunity. We'll be working with you to be able to schedule that meeting. And also, the presentation that I will present tonight will be available to anyone who would like to have that. And it's pretty informative, and hopefully, we'll be, we'll drive some of the talking points as we get to April town meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and stand up and use pointer and get into the budget. All right? So one of the things that I just want to start with is kind of talking a little bit about how we actually got to the point where we are presenting the budget tonight. We actually started building our budget in October, late September, October, and we got to the point where all our cost center managers, which they are here tonight, present the budget. They were giving pretty strict directions on what to do, but it's very collaborative. We allow them to go off and take a look at what their needs are. One of the things that we gave with parameters is really that they had to operate under the same level of service, meaning that the services we offer today, we're going to offer next year. And we really wanted them to take that into consideration, that we believe that we're not in a position to look at adding positions, we're not in that scope right now, to be able to look at how we continue to add different programming features. I think every single cost center manager out there tonight would say that they have a list of wants, but for the sake of our discussion tonight, those wants are really not in this budget. For that purpose of sticking with same level of service, keep in mind that that same level of service distinction is the same for the entire town of Plymouth. This isn't just the school department, this is something that is agreed upon between the town departments and the school department. The next thing that our budget contains is really taking a look at contractual obligations. The contractual obligations that we have in this budget tonight are very, very, they drive the budget, in a sense, okay? We have contracts that range from special education contracts to transportation contracts, out-of-district placement contracts, and labor contracts. And those pretty much drive the budget. And the increases that you'll see tonight, we'll break those out by section so you can actually see where those increases are. One of the things that's really taking shape in education is mandated services. We have a number of mandated services that we offer our community, our educational community, and those prices continue to escalate. And those are things, when you start taking a look at same level of service, same level of service applies to mandated service, contractual obligations, and things of that nature. And the last thing is the things that are always there, every year, special education and transportation. Our transportation contract is one of the largest in the Commonwealth. Our bus contract is, increases just under 3%. And that's just to operate the same system. We're not adding buses, we're not removing buses. We are keeping our transportation infrastructure as efficient as we possibly can make it, and the budget that you're going to hear tonight reflects that, okay? So that's pretty much how we roll. These are the different cost centers that we put money into in the school department. These cost centers are very specific. We don't have any flexibility on how they are operating. We have certificated salaries, clerical salaries, other salaries, contracted services, supplies of materials, and other expenses. These six categories are categories that are specified by the Commonwealth Department of Education, and it's, they're specifically for comparison from school to school, from district to district. And that's how we actually manage our money. We have an auditing firm come in every year to actually audit our books, to ensure that we're actually with the spirit of that legislation and that requirement, to make sure that our budgets are in line with the state auditing. But you can see, this slide demonstrates where we are with certificated salaries. I will break these down a little bit more, but you can see the increases. We're about a 3.4% increase for certificated salaries, about 3.4%, 3.5% increase for clerical. We're up about 4.3% for other salaries. I'll get into the specifics on those in just a bit. Contracted services are up 5.09%. Supplies and materials are up 3.56, excuse me, 3.56%. And other expenses are up by a little bit over 2%. So we are up total for the district about 3.85% above the current year, okay? So we're about 3.85% above, which is a total of about 3.8 million, okay? This slide breaks it out a little bit clearer for you. This is certificated salaries. Our budget for any one of the Plymouth public schools that has a license, anyone that's certified, we call it certificated, all right, is $65,792,000, which is 63% of this graph. Then the next one is clerical salaries. It's $3 million, about 3%. Clerical, of course, is clerical for all our buildings across the school district and programming across the district, all right? Our next one are other salaries. That's skilled craftsmen, that's paraprofessionals, that any other support that doesn't fit in these first two categories. If you don't have a license and you're not clerical, you fit into other salaries. Our next piece of the pie is contracted services, which is 18% of our total budget, about $18.8 million. So everything that has a contract that goes through Mr. Costin's office is very, very specific, and it is in contracts. Copier contracts, bus contracts, special education contracts, anything that has a contract, it is contained within this section of the budget. Take a look at supplies and materials for all our schools and all our programming across the district. That's 3% of the budget, that's $2.8, $2.8 million. That's what we have for supplies, all right? And as I mentioned before, this is one of those areas that, for us, we don't have a lot of increases at all. The only increases that we see in here are subscriptions and costs that are inherent into those particular books and materials that we do buy. The last one is other expenses, and it's about $900,000, which is about 1% of this total. And that's relative to professional development and other items that don't fit into the other five categories. And those are specific to the Department of Education on what they like this area to be populated. The majority of what's in this area is professional development, okay? Let's take a look at where these increases are by category. So this slide demonstrates what the increases are when we talk about, okay, you know, certificated salaries are up, well, this is where it's at. The total for certificated salaries on all the contracts that we have for certificated staff is up going into next year by $2.1 million. Contracted services are up by $934,000. Keep in mind, contracted services, like I've mentioned before, there are escalators in contracts. And as I have sent to the school committee in the past, documents from out-of-district placements, where we start to see where out-of-district placements increase their tuitions, that's going to be in contracted services. So a lot of the expense increases that we see are obligations. Like I said, our regular day school bus contract is about 2.85% increase for next year. That's a small increase compared to the other increases we have across the district. Other salary increases are up $387,000. And then keep in mind that these other salary increases are due to contractual negotiations, okay? Clerical salaries are up $341,000. Supplies and materials are up $101,000. And other expenses are down by $7,165. So we do have a decrease in those areas, okay? So in this particular area. So we have one area where we're down, the rest are up. Let's take a look at school budget increases in the trending from year to year. So this chart demonstrates where we started in this administration back in 2009. We were, as you can remember, we were hitting some really tough financial times, that was the economic downturn, and our budget was 1.5% below the prior year, okay? If you take a look at October of 2008, there were 9C cuts from the state, which 9C cut is a cut to Chapter 70. That's money that we get from state tax for education. We had a reduction in that because of the economic condition of Massachusetts, and we had to make some adjustments. Mr. Costin in our office wrote some federal stimulus grants to be able to subsidize salaries for our staff, and we didn't lay anybody off during that period of time, so we were very fortunate to get through that. But if you like, take a look at FY 2011, we were still 2% below the prior year. And then we start to rebound. FY 2012, we are up 3.1%. And we can move all the way over to FY 2017. This is a really important year for us because the school department, with direction of the school committee, decided to go after implementation for Full Day K. And you can see Full Day K, we, our budget went up to 5.8% above prior year. Keep in mind, we really worked hard to sell the Full Day K program, keeping in mind that we would get increased Chapter 70. And you can see that following year, after kids were in the seats, we had an increase to 4.56, excuse me, 4.56%. But keep in mind that we had to fund Full Day K for a year before the kids came in. And if you go to 2019, you start to see that we were starting to get to that 3% again. We had a bump because we had to actually pay for those kids for a full year. We had to see them in the seats to get Chapter 70. And then we started getting to the point in 2019 where we started stabilizing, and we were about 3%. That was 2019. This current year, this time last year, we were presenting the budget, we were 3.28% above. And we come to this budget, and we are 3.85% above prior year. So this is the trending over 12 years. You can see what's happened, but it is, it kind of tells where we were in time. And it also demonstrates that we've really tried to be somewhat responsible and try not to get these budgets too high. If we were to go back into 2006, 2007, there were years that were 5%, 6% budget increases, and we tried to stabilize that, of course. Back in 2008, we didn't have a choice. But this does tell the tale of the last 12 years. This chart demonstrates, actually, we're missing some data here, so I'm going to skip over this. For some reason, the numbers aren't populating. So this basically has the trend of dollars from year to year. It's not populated for some reason, and we'll just skip over that. This chart is very important because this tells the story of our entire budget, the entire budget of the Plymouth School Department with benefits. This adds insurance. So our budget is, with insurance, $129 million. This particular graph, if we take it all the way to the end here, we can see that health care for active employees is 12% of this pie, and it represents about $15 million of expense, that we need to cover those expenses. Keep in mind, retired employee health care benefits for retirees for the school department is about $9 million, and that's what we pay for retirees when they actually leave the district. And this liability also identifies workman's comp. Workman's comp for the school department on a yearly basis is about $633,000. So this is the entire school budget for the Plymouth public schools, once you add health care for active employees, retirees, and workman's comp, all right? So let's take a look at contracted services accounts with significant difference. So these are accounts where you start to see where the majority of our increases are coming from, okay? Our most expensive area is going to be special education tuitions. Special education tuitions are at $491,000. So if you take a look at the comment I made earlier about how our tuitions have gone up, our numbers for special education out-of-district placements have not gone up, but our tuitions have gone up. We talked about that at length last year with our education Subcommittee, but this is a condition that all school departments are living with. The costs for out-of-district placements are extremely expensive. The next item is regular day transportation. Our contract for regular day transportation is up by $260,000. Homeless and foster care transportation. As some of you know, we have an obligation to transport homeless students that are identified as homeless and students that are part of a foster care situation. That increases $76,000 that we're projecting for next year. That is a very vulnerable subject in our budget. Electricity is up about $53,000. And keep in mind, our electricity is derived from solar. And one of the things that we presented to the community over time is that there would be some level of degradation to the solar panels over time. We're starting to realize a little bit of that. And also, there's a slight increase to delivery charges. So our stability of solar, as we have projected six or seven years ago, maybe eight years ago, we would start to see some slight increases to electricity. It's because the solar panels start to degrade over time, and they don't generate the output that they normally did when they were installed. So we start to see some of that drop off. And also, delivery charges have increased as well. See, natural gas and propane has gone up by $28,000. We'll talk about that in a little bit, as far as how our natural gas and propane has been a moving factor for us, because we've converted to natural gas and propane over oil. You'll see that drop. And also, out-of-district vocational tuitions. A lot of people ask me about this topic quite frequently, and that is relative to why are we paying for out-of-district vocational tuitions when we have a vocational program in our school district? The town of Plymouth, like every other community in Massachusetts, has an obligation to send students to vocational programming. If our community does not have that programming, a student has the ability to apply to a vocational program that does not have one of our programs, and a student, if a student gets accepted, the town of Plymouth has to pay the tuition for those children. So we do have a few students going to out-of-district vocational programming opportunities, and they have been going to these schools for quite some time. And those are specific to programs that we don't offer in the town of Plymouth. So let's take a look at special education. This graph demonstrates where we were in 2013. This is where what we spent on local funds for special education placements. Back in 2013, we were $3.9 million. You can just follow the trend. We actually, if you add these two numbers together, this is, let me back that up a little bit. This is 2013. 3.9 million. We're about $6 million here, okay? And that's for placements, all right? Now, the orange section is what we get in Circuit Breaker Relief, all right? So, that money comes back to the school department to actually buy down some of this debt. But if you see this trend, you can see where the costs are going up. In 2014, there was a reduction. 2015, there was a reduction. 2016, there was an increase. 2017, an increase. 2018, there was an increase. 2019, there was an increase. 2020, where we are this year, significant increases, and we're projecting a significant increase for next year. So, you can see the trend that we have growing here for special education out-of-district placements, which is really driving a lot of our budget, and those are contracts that we have. And keep in mind, during this trajectory that you see of increases, our numbers have actually gone down for out-of-district placements, they haven't gone up. This is a, another indicator on why the school department has actually created programs within the Plymouth Public Schools to actually educate students in our district opposed to having them shipped out to out-of-district placement institutions that actually do a great job, but they're very expensive. So, we've done a lot to try to offset that. But this is what the picture looks like, and that's our, our placements. One of the things that I talk about quite frequently when we get into this, into the budget season is Chapter 70. Chapter 70 is where state tax is collected and is distributed to offset cost for education. Keep in mind, it's income. So, when you take a look at our total budget, it's, it is reduced by the amount of Chapter 70 that we actually bring in to help offset the cost for education. We bring in somewhere, the town of Plymouth brings in somewhere around $26, $27 million in Chapter 70. About $6 million of that goes to educating students that go to charters, okay? Could be a Plymouth charter, could be out of Plymouth. About $20 million of that is left for the Plymouth Public Schools to help buy down the debt of the total that I have described to you so far. This slide demonstrates what we have received in increases to Chapter 70 since 2007. And you can see the trend. We were at 1.7 million in 2007, 2008. Go to 2010, you see a reduction of 427,000. And again, these are all relative to what there is for availability and funds from state tax, okay? When people talk about changing the foundation budget and trying to increase Chapter 70, it's all dependent on the amount of state tax you have to actually fund this. So, if we're going to have an increase of Chapter 70, there has to have, there has to be, there needs to be more revenue to be able to fund it, all right? So, if we take a look all the way to 2011, we were about 575 above prior year. This, like I said before, this slide demonstrates exactly how much money we received in increase from one year to the next, okay? Full Day K was a big year for us. You can see we got additional Chapter 70. We were up to 1.5 million because we were able to add that program, and that was a bump in 2018. 2019 is 240, 243,000, and 2020, these are not actuals, these are what we believe at the end of the day, we will actually settle on, an increase of about 241,000. There is a big push to try to get this number formula revised, but these numbers are what we work off when we build our budget, and that's what we work with Lynn Barrett at the town to actually project what we think will happen. Doesn't always happen that way, but again, it's state tax dollars, and this number may fluctuate over time, all right? Let's take a look at utilities. And this is one thing that I think that we're very, I know we're very proud of in the district. If we take a look at propane and natural gas, back in 2012, we spent about $291,000 on propane and natural gas. We've actually increased that to $604,000. That is our, what we're budgeting for next year, all right? Let's take a look at oil. Back in 2012, we were using $430,000 in oil. We are down to $65,000 in oil. So, you can see where we actually implemented propane and we are, and natural gas, and we are eliminated, eliminating oil. Let's take a look at electricity. Electricity back in 2012 was $2.2 million, and we are up to, we actually reduced that down to 1 million. Keep in mind, there's a slight increase because of the degradation factor and also the, the charges that are increasing for our electricity. But if you take a look at it right now, we have been able to save quite a bit over the years since our implementation. That's a significant savings for the town of Plymouth. Take a look at our grand total. Back in 2012, we were $2.9 million in total energy or utility budget, and we are down to 1.6 million. And you see the increases that we have over the last two years. Increases to natural gas, propane have been one, and we see that going up. And also, the increases to electricity as we saw this year. So, that's what it looks like overall for utility for the district. This slide is, is rather busy, but it demonstrates the amount of grants that we bring in. Each one of these represents dollar amounts of grants that we bring in, and you can see the colors fluctuate from year to year. But if you look at a, a lot of these grants, these don't show up in the budget, in the sense that our total operational budget, budget is 104 million, 120-plus million with healthcare benefits. This slide demonstrates the amount of money we bring from, bring in from other grants. There are some, you know, some difficult points within this slide because it demonstrates that we've had some grants that come, some grants that go, some grants that get, that are getting reduced. I'll talk a little bit about the, at the end of the presentation relative to the title grants. Those are federal grants that we see a reduction, and that is something that we're, we're a little concerned about. But this is what we bring in for, for grants in the Plymouth Public Schools. The largest grant that we have identified is actually Circuit Breaker. It doesn't have a title here. For some reason, it didn't show up tonight. But if, if you take a look at the, the highest increase that we have, or the, the most money we bring in is through Circuit Breaker, okay? And that's for extraordinary special education services, all right? This particular slide, you can't read it, but it's something that you can refer to. This slide is something that is very important for you to keep an eye on as you look through the budget. This slide gives you a budget history for two years and what the increases are or decreases are in a cost center for every single budget category, not category, but cost center in the school district. So, this will tell you, if you want to know what the total budget is for a program, this, this page will tell you what it is. If you want to look at a school, you can get an entire overview of what it costs to run that program, okay? Mr. Costin is going to spend some time telling you a little bit about the chart of accounts. You want to take that, there?
Thank you, Dr. Marissa. Everything that we do, as Dr. Marissa said, is based on our accounting structure, and we are mandated by the Department of Education to have an accounting structure that reports under certain categories. What we did was we put in, first of all, you, under item, agenda item 4.1, you'll see an item, Adobe file that says Chart of Accounts. We included two, two documents in there. One is our Munis Chart of Accounts. That's our accounting system that both the town and the school district use. That's important because when you start to look at the reports that the cost center managers go over, you'll be able to break out through this accounting report, the Chart of Accounts, you'll see, and we only have the first page up here, but as you go through, you'll be able to see that we report on our departments. All these reports are depart, are sorted by cost center and the department with the cost center. And they also will break out, if you want to see what a function code is, it'll tell you exactly what that function code's for. So, the numbers mean something. They'll explain it to you, what's English, what's art, what's math, what's a, what's a salary, what is a contracted service, along with the descriptions that the cost center managers have put in each item in the detailed report. The second Chart of Accounts, so to speak, is the DESC Chart of Accounts, which goes over the function codes. That gives you greater detail on how we have to report items and group items, whether they're a, an instructional supply, whether they're a, to do with a copier, whether it's technology that's in the classroom, outside the classroom. So, those kinds of things you will see as you go through the, the cost centers' detailed reports that each, each administrator presents. Now, having said that, when the Department of Ed continues to make changes in their, in their cost center functions, in their, their accounting functions that we have to report on. The reason they do that is they kind of try to refine it so every school's reporting in the same manner. So, they constantly change it. And what that means for us is that you will see, as you go through, in FY 19, there will be some expenditures, and in FY 20, there'll be blanks. Well, why is that? Because they've required us to now categorize those budget funds going forward under a different function code. And examples of that will be a lot to do with professional development, to do with technology, to do with copiers, believe it or not. They want us to break out copiers separate from administration to what's used for instructional for students. There's, there's different technology functions that we have to break out. So, when we get to each cost center, we can explain those for you. But this should give you a guide. It's something that really, you'd have to spend a few minutes to look at, but I think once you see it and go through it, it'll make sense as it's really linked with the detailed reports that we'll be presenting tonight.
So, I just want to cover one last slide, which really talks about some of the future concerns that, that I have relative to our budget. There are a lot of obvious concerns relative to spending, but for the school department, as we look at building our budget for 2022, Title I is a concern. Title I is a program that assists students at the elementary level with, with primarily reading. And it really depends on the qualification of the school based on free and reduced lunch count. The issue that we have is Title I has gone down dramatically, and that's a federal allocation. When I first started here, when I was in Dr. Campbell's role, I used to be, have direct oversight of that budget, and we were about almost $1.3 million. And we've been reduced dramatically in that budget. So, not only has it caused our program to change, it's also caused us to have less support for, for students. That program in the future will, will, will take a hit, and I see that happening. But we're going to have to decide whether we continue to, continue to offer those kind of services, and we shift some of those services to the budget, or we just only operate under the budget that's allowed through Title I, okay? The next one is Title II-A. We've already seen reductions in this area. We've had indications. This is one of the budgets that Dr. Campbell manages relative to professional development. And we do receive funding to be able to support that. There are mandates from the Department of Education relative to the amount of professional development that we must offer our, our staff, and this budget helps us to do that a great deal. Keep in mind, if we start having reductions in these two areas, we have some tough decisions to make, because we're going to have to decide whether we increase, increase the line items to be able to support professional development and instruction, or, or we continue to look at other opportunities to do so. So, right now, those are concerns. The increased cost of out-of-district placements. This is something that I mentioned to the school committee last year. I mentioned to everyone that I talked to on the road as we got prepared for town meeting. This is one area where, you know, out-of-district schools that are private, that take our students can raise tuition up to 20%, which we don't have the ability to come up with 20%, even 3%. I mean, it makes it very difficult for us to do that. It's a mandated expense, and we have to do it, and that's something that we have to, to keep an eye on. Number four is relative to unfunded, unfunded mandates and unfunded liability. We have quite a few unfunded mandates. I, I did two different reports over two or three years, over the total of cost that it takes the Plymouth Public Schools to really look at what it takes to educate and meet the needs of these unfunded liabilities, and they're very expensive. And that's something that is, it's something that we have to do. Those are costs that have to be expended relative to the law and mandate. The last one is, and some of our schools can tell stories that are a little bit more relative, but our English language learner education program, it's, it's increasing dramatically the class of district. We, we did see it increase slightly over the last few years, but I would say the last couple of years have been a significant increase in the district, keeping in mind that English language education is one of those areas that is heavily reviewed by the Department of Education, and they have specific mandates on coverage, and they have specific mandates on the amount of students that are in the classroom, and also the amount of professional development that all our staff get with this. So, this is something that we're watching very closely. I will, I will tell you, we are going to have to either reallocate to be able to fund additional positions in this area. And how we have been able to survive in the district for the past five to six years is anytime there's a need in the district, we don't ask for a new position at this venue. What we do is we actually look at reallocating positions in the district, make some decision in the district to not fund certain programs, transfer dollars to be able to fund things. This is one of those areas that we're going to have to fund, because we do see an increase in numbers, and our principals can be specific on what they see for number increases in their buildings, keeping in mind that it's something that we, we just need to do. But these are the top five concerns that I see as we even look at this budget and some of the risks that we're taking. And also, I will tell you, in the future, these are going to be hot button topics. And I didn't even get into social emotional, which is probably six, okay? So, let's move on. So, tonight, you have a order of presentation. This order of presentation is relative to the presenters that will come to the table, and they will go in this order, okay? So, we will call them to the table. If you have any specific questions now on what I presented, I can take those now. Mr. Costin, myself, anyone around the table can take those questions. If not, we will then get into our presentation. So, I'll open it up, or Ashley, go back to you, Dr. Sorenson, for questions.
Committee members, if you have any questions, Dr. Sidman, Dr. Myes. Sometimes, sometimes you show your age in more ways than one, huh?
Woo!
Any questions? So, just, just, just a ballpark. So, the 129, whatever that number was, 129 million dollars, what was that total budget? Yeah, 129,015?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's not net. That's gross. The net, is the net less than that after we take away the grants and the Chapter 70?
No, that is total. What we would do in order to reduce that, to, for relative terms, we would take Chapter 70 off, which is, would bring it down to about 109 million.
Okay.
Okay?
That's what I'm asking you to clarify that.
Our grants are on top of that.
Our grants are on top of that. What does that mean, on top of that?
Means that our, it doesn't show in this budget.
Operational budget.
Okay. In the operational budget.
So, so if I understand what you're saying, after we take out Chapter 70, it's costing the town of Plymouth approximately 109, 110,000 dollars.
109 million.
But that number then goes lower as the grants come in?
Yes. No, it doesn't.
It does not.
They help meet the needs that we have.
Say that again?
They help to address the needs we have without adding it to our operational budget.
I understand.
So, this is the total, subtract about 20 million. So, our budget after subsidy is about 109. And anything else we bring in is really resource and additional services that we provide to the community.
To that grant.
Yes, sir.
Got you. Any other questions?
Okay, back to you, Dr. Myes.
Okay, so, Mr. Costin.
I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I know we're going to bring up our first presenter, Mr. Montron, but while we're doing that, the next agenda item is, is a...
but while we're doing that, the next agenda item is a summary of financial reports. Just to let everyone know, there's a number of reports there that start at the macro, at the budgets as a whole, and then brings it down to a number of, to looking at individual schools and object codes. Salaries, ones, twos, threes, certificated salaries, other salaries, contracted services. So you'll be able to see that by the cost center. And the item following that, we've covered all those items, so we provide those as a resource. So on 4.3, when we start to make our proposals, there's two detailed reports there. The report number four, I'm sorry, 333, is broken out, is a summary that's broken out by cost center and department. So if you wanted to know how much you're spending in English at the Nathaniel Morton School, you would see that. The cost center presentation tonight will be on item number two, which is Report 352. So if you click on that, and then you highlight the cost center that comes up, that's what the cost center managers will be speaking to tonight. And that will list everything in order by department, which again is general education, English, art, music. And you'll see all those items in that order.
Okay, back to you. So tonight, our first presenter is our Districtwide Facility Services, and we have Arthur Montron. That is Cost Center 359.
Good evening. Cost Center 359 begins on page 181. This is the budget that we use to maintain a building's frame. Represents a 4.1% increase over the last year, over the present year, over approximately $89,000. There were four areas that increased that quite a bit. We've got about $35,000 in salary adjustments. $9,000 in a wastewater treatment plant increase because we'll be looking at a new contract next July. And we've also put in some monies to replace security cameras. $10,000 because they are going out of warranty next year. And $10,000 to replace dumpsters because we're having a real problem with them running through and stealing stuff. So overall, that's $64,000 of the $89,000, rest are standard increases because of contract services and materials. But if there's a particular item that you would like to go further into, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Montron. Okay, seeing none.
How old are the current dumpsters that we have now, Arthur?
Current dumpsters actually were given to us through the pound. Most of them are probably 12 years old. We send them out quite regularly to re-welding. The block is always getting re-welded. There is some more money in here for doing some of that. But there's a point now where you can't find good enough metal to keep all of them.
Question? How many dumpsters does that $10,000 get us? Just curious.
It's probably going to get us about six, eight of them. We still repair some of the others. They're really the dumpsters for the smaller schools. You know, the little, they're not the compacting dumpsters that we have with the big schools. Those kind of hold up a little better, a little longer. These are the small ones. And really what it is, is you rot out a lot of them just with your lunch. After lunches, running everything in the dumpster, you have milk and everything else.
Makes sense.
Okay, moving along. Next, we're going to start with elementary. Thank you, Arthur. We're going to start with Cost Center 305, 306, 307, and 308. That's Cold Spring Elementary, Federal Furnace Elementary, Hedge Elementary, and Indian Brook. So we will do our four, four of our eight elementary schools to begin with tonight. And we're going to start with Cold Spring Elementary and Chris Morgan. She is the principal at Cold Spring Elementary. So, Chris, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Your floor is 52. Cold Spring starts on page four, which is on page five. So a little bit about Cold Spring. We continue to be a full-student, Title I school and a ELL designated school with a population of 205 students. We are K through five with two classrooms at every level. 50% of our population receives free and reduced lunch. And we continue with the Leader in Me initiative. We are in this, going on our fourth, third to fourth year of the Leader in Me. So same level service for next year. Our projection is for 205 students, same level service. You'll notice that for ELL, math, science, social studies, all the curriculum areas, the specialist areas, has their per pupil, so that will be at the 205. So therefore, you'll see a slight increase in some of our line items. For the most part, we stay around the same or with a slight increase due to increasing costs. But we have an overall of a 2.25 increase, so 2% increase for next year. I just want to recognize that without our PTA and some other donations, our PTA has supported us with Chromebooks, Elmo document cameras. So that's outside of our budget. So but in the, our overall is 2% increase for next year.
Questions? Just a quick question on the math consumables. The actual cost went down. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, we just had a slight decrease.
Decrease? And is that for the purpose of the, we don't usually see decreases. That's why I'm asking you.
Our population went down just a little bit, so I just budgeting for what we actually use.
Thank you.
Just one of the things that I want to clarify for the school committee, also finance committee members. A few years ago, what we did is we really didn't have a way of ensuring that every child was able to receive the same dollar amount allocation by program. So we actually implemented a dollar amount per child so that's consistent across the district. So every single program has a set amount that every child will get across the district so that there's some level of consistency on what we are able to do. This is managed and supported by the coordinators. So the coordinators actually work these figures out. They then work with the building principals to actually insert these dollars into their budget. So when you take a look at those dollar amounts per program, it really is coming through the work of the coordinators, identifying that we want to ensure there's a level, a same level of allocation per building, per child, across the district.
Okay, Federal Furnace? Oh, I'm sorry.
There's a bigger question, but we have the two schools, or is it two schools that do Leader in Me? So do we pay? We pay per school, you pay a per building, $7,500 a year plus. If we did it, not that necessarily it's something that every school kind of would fit into, but is there some sort of discount we could get if the district as a whole, if each of the schools did Leader in Me?
I can actually take that question. The Leader in Me is, you know, it's a great program. It started at South Elementary with Principal Blaisdell. Ms. Morgan investigated a couple of years ago, three years ago, four years ago almost, into looking at how it could really help her building with some of the culture and climate issues that she wanted to implement. And it's very difficult to get district-wide pricing or combined pricing. One of the things that has really helped both of these schools is since we did have some Title I funds, they were able to help with some of the implementation. So the initial implementation on both of these schools, South Elementary and Cold Spring, they were subsidized by grants. So as the grants have gone away, you're starting to see these costs for the implementation or the continued use of this model to be able to be funded.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Sorenson. We're going to move to Cost Center 306, which is Federal Furnace Elementary School, and that's Principal Harold.
Good evening, all. The Federal Furnace, Cost Center 306, begins on page 12 of Report 352. I'll begin by just stating that Federal Furnace, we are projected to have a slight decrease in enrollment next year to about 348 students. So to speak to Dr. Sorenson's earlier comment about we don't usually see a negative number, you do see an overall decrease in many of the accounts at Federal Furnace, and that is due to the per pupil expenditure in most of those accounts.
Right, I asked that question more generically, but I got the right answer, same answer. Okay, thank you.
Federal Furnace, as I said, we're projected to have about 348 students next year. Currently, we have 18 classrooms, three at every grade level, K to five. We do also have two classrooms of the district-wide ASD program currently housed at Federal Furnace. You know that those are transitioning slowly to either D-Book or South at time, but at this point in time, we currently still have two classrooms. We also, like Cold Spring, are a Title I school. We are, currently, we have two Title I teachers. And as Dr. Mas was talking about earlier, that is a federally granted, so those salaries do come via the federal monies from that grant. That's due to approximately, or about 35% free and reduced lunch within the school of that 350 population. As is stated, the accounts, all of them reflect information we received from the various coordinators in the district that do a great job of providing this information based on the needs we would need to provide the resources for each student within all the buildings, including Federal Furnace. I do also, just like what Morgan was talking about, I can't speak enough to our PTA. I think the support they provide, not only to the students directly through field trips and so forth, but given those enrichment things that schools have not been able to provide, well, beyond even before I started here, but also just to support schools themselves from field projects, playgrounds, and so forth. Those things are so vital to the day-to-day activities kids get to enjoy. That's part of school, part of school life, school culture. And I can't speak enough to what they did. In one year's time, we went from having a very old, dilapidated field area, and in a year, we were able to literally transform it into a phenomenal place for kids to, you know, spend the recess day in, day out. So again, I can't speak enough to their volunteer commitment support. Do you have any specific items related to any of the accounts? Be happy to speak here.
Questions?
Okay, moving along. Moving on to Cost Center 307, Hedge Elementary School, and we have Kristen Wilson, the principal of Hedge Elementary.
Good evening. So I'll be speaking on the budget for Hedge Elementary School, which begins on page 22 on Report 352. Hedge Elementary School is a current school-wide Title I school. We're one of those schools that are, we receive supplemental funds to supplement a variety of our programs. We currently have 178 students. Our enrollment fluctuates throughout the year. We started at 165 students this school year, and we've worked our way up to 180, and now we're right back down to 178. However, we're projected to build our budget based on 171. So when you look at our budget, you'll see those minor decreases that the other principals have also described. Overall, our increase in budget is about 7%, which really speaks to our certified salary line items. Some of our staff have been working really hard to get their master's degrees, and they're going to be moving over in columns and steps for this upcoming year. Out of our 178 students that attend our school, we have 11 classrooms for grades K through five. And we also are one of the schools that has seen a significant increase in students receiving English language services throughout the year, actually about a 10% increase. So we have roughly 26, 26% of our students qualify for English language services. 35% of our students, English is their second language, although a lot of those children are already bilingual, so they don't require the additional services. When you're looking at our English language students, our learners, a lot of them are what we call a Level One English language student, which means that they come to us without any English, and their service requires close to 180 minutes per day. And so they're looking at receiving a lot of support by an English certified teacher, English lenga, ESL teacher. Right now, we have one and a half English language teachers, and we're really struggling to fit those mandated minutes in for those students. Those salaries are in the student support budget that Dr. Helfen will be speaking to later on. We benefit from a wonderful PTA that works really hard. We are a small PTA, so they do what they can to give us enriching opportunities for our students. They try to help support our field trips. We try to write grants whenever we can. We just got an amazing grant from the Museum of Science, so we were able to bring our students up there at a discounted rate. They also, Museum of Science has also come to our school for students as well. Our Title I funds really help support a lot of enriching activities that a lot of the other schools' PTAs support. And so without those funds, it would be really tricky for our school to be able to offer some of the things that we offer for the children now. The only other line item that you might see with an increase has to do with our art teacher. We do have an art teacher out on a one-year leave of absence, and her salary was much higher than our current art teacher. So that is a noted increase in our budget because the current salary is the one-year position that we hold right now. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them for you.
Questions or comments? I'll just comment. It's only about, it's only about $325, but it's a shame to see the pianist being cut down as much as you're cutting it down because somebody who played the piano for school performances is a very valuable person.
Yes, well, we are combining with Cold Spring for our choral performance this year, so that reduces the need to have two. And we also, one of our teachers has been helping us with our practices. So Karen Cloddy is a pianist at my school, and she can help.
Okay, so it's still provided then?
Yes, we'll still have confidence for the performances.
All right, Indian Brook.
And tonight, Cost Center 308, Indian Brook Elementary, and Principal Manfredi, Erica Manfredi.
Good evening. Cost Center 308, Indian Brook, is on Report 352. We start on page 30. Indian Brook, currently this year, we have 550 students enrolled, right as of today. Next year, we're projected to have 547 students. We have 28 home rooms and 90, about 90 full or part-time staff members. We have all of our, we have level service, so no increases anywhere except for in salaries. The contractual numbers increase those. Coordinators provided their numbers. There's a slight increase with some of those based on their costs, but nothing significant. We, as Mr. Harold said, the autism program is still in the middle of transitioning over to Indian Brook. We currently have three classrooms, grades K to three with 15 students. We'll move up to K to four next year, and then K to five the year after that. We're planning on four to five students coming in next year, so increase our numbers up to about 19, 20. We are not a Title I school, so we receive no funding from that. One important thing I want to note is we are lucky enough to have at no cost to us a counselor from Gosnold that works full-time in our building. If there were seven school days, she could fill those days. We have a great need for her services. And I want to speak to our PTA as well. They're incredible. This year, they just did a fundraiser that raised $24,000, which is a huge amount, but they fund all of our field trips, all of our in-building events for students. And as you know, like everything else, costs of these go up every year. So they fund all of that, and they also are working on some beautification projects within the building. Things, you know, our custonians do an amazing job keeping the school looking beautiful. But there are little pieces that, you know, they just can't do that the PTA helps support us with, which is great. Any questions?
Questions for Andy and Brooke?
Questions for Indian Brook? Nope, Dr. Masse.
Okay, we're going to move to the next group, and that's Mannamet Elementary, Nathaniel Morton, South Elementary, and West Elementary. So, we'll have cost centers three oh nine, ten, twelve, and fourteen. While the principals are getting situated, I just want to inform the finance committee members here tonight, and also school committee, that the salaries that are within each budget, the salaries are actually calculated and distributed through Mr. Costin's office. We, we are, we want to make sure that all that information is up to date and relevant. So, the budget information that the principals have tonight is really a collaborative effort. As I mentioned from the beginning, as the coordinators help with the specific programs, salaries and dollar amounts for those are actually generated through the business office and inserted into the budget. So, the cost center managers at the elementary principals, they, they have the responsibility of managing it and, and actually presenting it tonight. So, with that said, we'll move to cost center three oh nine, and Patrick Frank, principal at Mannamet. Dr. Frank.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to talk about cost center three oh nine, which begins on page thirty-nine of report three fifty-two. Budget for Mannamet Elementary School projects services for two hundred and seventy students. That would service a total of fifteen home rooms and a staffing of about forty-one employees. Total proposed budget increase for Mannamet, and then this budget would be three point five percent. Represents a level service budget. We don't have any district-wide programs at Mannamet Elementary School. We also don't qualify for the threshold of being a school-wide Title One school, but we're currently a targeted assistance Title One school, so we receive some services through a Title One grant. The supply costs reflect, as my colleagues have mentioned, the per pupil expenditures for each of the different content areas. And as far as other areas, other ways that we try to augment the budget, we have a number of different ways that we try to go about that. The most, most prevalent, as you, as you see on a daily basis around the school, is the work of our Holman School Association. They do an amazing job raising anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars during a given year. If you go into Mannamet School, you'll see that there are speaker, speaker system put throughout all the hallways, so we can control different sound and music for the boys and girls throughout the entire school at different events or different times during the day if we needed to do that. They're also in the process of helping us raise funds to completely renovate our stage area, stage curtains, lighting, sound. It's a long-term project. It's something that's very expensive that we're going to do in different phases, but they've begun raising that fund. Those funds for us, we're very appreciative of that. We also have a counselor that comes at no cost to the district through Gosnold, himself, one day a week to Mannamet Elementary. Soon, he'll be two days a week, and services anywhere from ten to fifteen students between those two individuals where their caseloads are set for that session day. And then, we've also been able to gain some significant funds through different grants that we've been able to obtain. Last year, the American Power Foundation was generous enough to award seventeen thousand dollars toward Maker Space to provide some significant technology in there, within the Maker Space. Maker Spaces are sort of like a creativity hub for technology in your school, so we were thrilled to be able to have that take place. And then, Entergy's been very generous to us over the years as well, averaging anywhere from four to five thousand dollars a year. Unfortunately, those grant funds will be going away, but they've gone to great use over the years, and we're very appreciative of that as well. There are the smaller grants along the way that we try to obtain to fund different programs or different new sources that we're looking for, and we're trying to do our best to chase those as well. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope, Dr. Masse.
All right, moving over to Nathaniel Morton, excuse me, Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, and Principal Spencer, Mike Spencer, class center three ten.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be with our neighbors right across the street. So, we're presenting the budget for Nathaniel Morton, begins on page forty-seven of that report three fifty-two that people have been citing. We come at this point of, of the process here, it's going to sound pretty similar to most of my colleagues in front of me, but give you a little more specific picture of Nathaniel Morton. We are currently in an enrollment of five hundred and seventy-two students. We had a projected enrollment last year at this time for our budget preparation of five hundred and sixty-five. We're looking at a projected enrollment for next year of five hundred and fifty-five students. So, a little bit of fluctuation between these couple of years here. That services a total of twenty-eight home rooms and around approximately ninety staff members total, both part-time and full-time. Our proposed budget variance between last year or this current year and next year's proposal is a six percent increase with a three hundred and ten thousand dollar difference in that variance. And the majority of that, as people have mentioned, I think Principal Wilson mentioned it beautifully, that represents our professional development in staff and, and the variance in their salaries based on moving in lanes and columns through their, their own professional development and accessing various degrees. There is some small changes in various line items, again, either presented by coordinators in terms of the per pupil cost that they gave, or some adjustments to finding a, an area that we're looking to enhance in a small way versus another. I think you've seen those, those differences, maybe two hundred dollars here or there on those line items. We do continue to offer a district-wide program at Nathaniel Morton. It's called the Bridge Program. It currently serves students who are in grades three through five. They are serviced in one classroom, and they are typically students who are a few years behind their same-age peers in a, in a learning process and are looking to be integrated across the day, as well as getting their direct instruction in some of their main academic areas in that classroom. We are also one of those three English learner, English learner schools that, we are currently actively servicing thirty students, which represents about a fifty percent increase of those students that we were servicing from last year to this year. We had an enrollment of ten EL kindergarten students this year. We also support close to an additional ten families outside of those students who are identified as second language identified in the home. One last little demographic piece for us at Nathaniel Morton is we're at about a twenty-eight percent low-income status rate for our, for our school. I would certainly be remiss, and I would be tapped on the shoulder, but our, by our families if I didn't also echo really the great generosity and support that our families put together through our PTA, but also just in the work that they do, whether it is raising funds or volunteering, like most of the schools. We had a fabulous Thanksgiving feast day this past Tuesday with so many families giving up their time to be there to make kids' days go well. I would also be remiss if I didn't put a little plug in our breakfast with Santa, which is an annual event. It's coming up on December fourteenth and a few Saturdays, so those who want to have a little bagel with Santa, that's what will be happening right across the street. But the, in all seriousness, our PTA, as in the other schools, puts together so many different efforts and is always looking to not only fund opportunities for our students, but they recently have been putting together teacher grants to try to find unique ideas and opportunities to pursue in the classrooms. We had one last year that really caught the attention, I think, of our students and of the PTA, helping support a bike rodeo that was being put forth by our, one of our phys ed teachers and sort of helping the instruction of bike riding for third through fourth and fifth graders, and was really quite successful. So, purchasing some bikes that we can have from year to year to help that instruction take place. As in some other of the schools, we also do have services through Gosnold and South Bay, which do provide a great resource outside of our budget for helping that social-emotional learning for some of our identified students and families. So, a quick snapshot, but wanting to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? All right, moving along.
Moving along to cost center three twelve, South Elementary School. We have Principal Dr. Blaisdell, Adam, cost center three twelve.
Good evening. I am here representing South Elementary School. We start at page fifty-six of the budget package. Currently, we have six hundred and thirty students. We've got five addition, five additional students in the past three days. This enrollment, this budget is based upon about six hundred and fifteen students. We are, like Cold Spring, a leader in these schools as well. The total proposed budget is just about five hundred and six percent over the previous year, and again, it represents a level service budget. At South Elementary School, we do have a district-wide autism program. Currently, we have twenty-one students this year, and next year, we are anticipating about twenty-four students spread across three classrooms. We're looking at a little bit of growth in our program. And again, the budget amounts for each of the areas look to provide significant service that we provided this year. And again, we worked with curriculum coordinators to develop those numbers. And again, I want to mention my PTA, because as Dr. My, going back just a moment, because we are a leader of these schools, as Dr. Masse has said, we've had several grants over the past couple of years, but those grant sources are no longer, no longer offering grants. And switching to my PTA, they do quite a bit for our school, both providing students opportunities in school, additional enrichment programs, like my other colleagues have said, field trips. They just did a fall fundraiser and raised a lot more than they expected to raise. So, what we are doing is they are appropriating anything over what they anticipated the budget for this particular year towards a new playground fund. If you come to South Elementary School at recess, we have anywhere between a hundred and ten to our limit of students out of recess at one given time. So, we have one playground, and we cannot have that many kids on a playground at a time. So, they're looking to put in a second playground, so they're, they're fun, they're starting to fund with about eleven thousand dollars to start funding that second playground. And again, that's really due to the PTA and all the work that they do. And like some of my, my other colleagues, we do have Gosnold servicing several of our students in our building at this point, and always looking for, for more support. Be respectful.
No, no questions?
All right, we are now moving on to our last elementary school, which is West Elementary School, cost center three fourteen. Principal Scott Williams. Scott?
Thank you very much for allowing me to present cost center three fourteen tonight, West Elementary School. Our report begins on page sixty-five in the three fifty-two report that everybody has referenced this evening. This is a same-level service budget with a five percent increase from our previous year, meeting salary contractual obligations. A snapshot of West, the demographics and the makeup. We are projected to have three hundred and fifty-one students in the fall, K to five. Currently, we're at three forty-nine, so there's a small delta on that. We have eighty full and part-time employees. We have seventeen general education classrooms, three sections of K to four, two sections of grade five. We do house two district programs, the Life Skills Program, which has been renamed the Intensive Learning Center, and we have four care classrooms. Those are for our social-emotional children with those needs in the district. We also have three moderate special needs teachers that are working and collaborating with our general ed population. West Elementary was built in nineteen seventy-five. It's forty-four years old. We do have Title One assistance this year. We have a thirty-one percent percentage of free and reduced lunch students at West. At this point, I'll be very redundant. I want to echo some of the sentiments that my colleagues have already shared, but we do rely heavily on grants, grant funding. We also offer Gosnold services, counseling services at no charge. And then, our partners in education, the West PTA, a very strong, hard-working, dedicated, dynamic group of volunteers at West that fund so much of the programs that we have, monthly cultural arts enrichment. Our January Glow Run Fun Run is coming through Booster-Thon. That's coming next month in January. Technology purchases over the years, representing tens of thousands of dollars, iPads, Chromebooks, instructional assistive equipment, MIMI boards, busing costs and admittance fees for field trips, Scholastic Book Fair, our Nature's Classroom, which is now completed at West. That was all PTA funding. Playground equipment, our new kindergarten playground, which was finished in the spring of two thousand and nineteen. So, the kiddos this year have really enjoyed that new playground. Thank you to our PTA. And then, just donations from our Lions Club for five hundred dollars. And the Wahlberg family also donated a significant amount of money a few years ago for the basketball courts. So, a large percentage of our services are offered through grants and PTA efforts. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for West?
Tonight, we have cost center three nineteen, which is district-wide elementary school. Some of the costs that are spread out through the elementary schools are managed by Dr. Campbell, and he will present cost center three nineteen.
Thank you, Dr. Masse. So, cost center three nineteen starts on page seventy-five of your detailed reports, and it's really comprised of five major areas. First, our elementary instrumental staff. We have four elementary staff that provide instrumental lessons to our students, grades four and five. So, that's a very successful program, and that's funded here. We also have three health, elementary health educators that go across our eight elementary schools. They're part of this budget. We have an SEL coach, which is partially funded through cost center three nineteen. The other part is funded through a grant that we were fortunate enough to compete for and, and obtain, so we're happy about that. As you've heard from our elementary principals, it's something that's very much needed. So, that person is a, a great resource to our buildings to provide support around emotional behavioral health needs in the classroom. We also fund two math coaches and our elementary robotics program, which has been a very successful part of our school programs. This budget is an overall increase of four percent over prior year. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Campbell? Okay, Dr. Masse.
All right, we're moving on to our secondary schools. We'll start with the middle school. We have cost center three twenty-one and cost center three twenty-two. Three twenty-one is Plymouth Community Intermediate School. Three twenty-two is Plymouth South Middle School. And we will begin tonight, middle school, with Plymouth Community Intermediate School with Principal Brian Palladino. Brian?
All right, I made notes because it's the same school. The total budget presented tonight is a same-level service budget. The total increase of the entire budget is two hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and forty-seven, which is an overall increase of three point eleven percent. This budget was done in collaboration with the district coordinators and directors and reviewed by the PCIS School Council on November twenty-first. The projected enrollment for PCIS for the two thousand and twenty-one school year is nine hundred and eighty-eight, which is a decrease of about six point two percent. The major increases you'll see in this budget, the PCIS budget, are in science and technology. There is an increase of thirteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two, which is for the addition of drones for our technology and engineering classes. Additionally, we increased our science budget by eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. This increase is for the new science curriculum that was piloted at Plymouth South Middle School this year and will be implemented at PCIS next year. Lastly, there is a small increase of one thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars, which is for contracted services, supplies, and increase for transportation, transportation costs for the planetarium. If you have any questions regarding these increases, both Allison Ried and I will be happy to answer them at the end of the presentation. PCIS houses three district-wide programs. The CARE program, which is a program for students with emotional impairments. The projected enrollment for the CARE program is seventeen students, but I do caution you, the projection does usually typically increase throughout the school year because new students are referred to this program and students actually move in to the school that, that are required to go to that program. The second district-wide program is Basic Skills, which is a program for the intellectual impairments. The projected enrollment is thirteen. And lastly, we do house the EL program at PCIS. The current enrollment is thirty-two students, which has doubled from last year's enrollment. Again, this projection does change due to the numbers that students that enroll throughout the year. Although we do not have an ASD program, we have over twenty students with a primary diagnosis of ASD. And these students are, some of these students are serviced in an ASD program at the elementary school, but some are in with our regular MSN teachers at PCIS. PCIS has ninety-four point six teachers slash counselors, two nurses, twenty-two paraprofessionals, five secretarial staff members, and ten custodial staff members, two of which are floaters for the district. Last year, we worked with South Bay Community Service in Gosnold to provide additional social-emotional support for our students. Unfortunately, this year, we're no longer with South Bay, but we are working with Gosnold three days a week. That's a decrease in services by those organizations, which now are put on our counselors at the school. PCIS current free and reduced lunch population is thirty-three, thirty-seven point three-three percent, which has not changed from last year. These students receive free and reduced lunch rates, free bus transportation. Additionally, these students receive aid throughout the year for school-based activities. For example, many of our families receive PTA funds to help with field trips and other events that cost money. Most recently, these students receive Thanksgiving Day baskets, and will also receive holiday gift cards during the holiday break. These cards were purchased through a yard sale. It happens throughout the, the month of December at our lunches, and the money raised there goes back to our students in the form of gift cards for their families for the holidays. Additionally, we provide support for some of these students through the PCIS Courtney Green Fund, which is money raised by our staff to provide students with necessities during the year, like coats, jackets, sneakers, shoes, things like that. Our nurses obviously do it, also doing lunches in backpacks for the weekends for, for our students. As mentioned before, some of my colleagues at PTA provide so much for our students, we're on enrichment op- As mentioned before, some of my colleagues at PTA provide so much for our students, our enrichment opportunities. They help offset the cost of field trips, provide resources for family events like Student of the Month, Honest Breakfast, Olympics, Field Days, Dinner Dances, and so much more. We couldn't do that without the support. And if you have any questions regarding anything in the budget or the increases in science, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just, I have a quick question on the science increase. I was trying to find it and I can't find it. What page is it on? Do you know what page that science increase is on?
It is on, Allison, in the science budget.
It's drawn from page ninety-two.
Ninety-two, thank you.
What, what is the, on page seventy?
Seventy-seven?
You said seventy-two?
I have it on eighty.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't see it, so it must be me.
I think it's on eighty. Look at eighty. Yeah, okay, yeah, eighty, because it's the first line right there.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Ms. Badger?
You mentioned the decrease in the services for the students with like, you have Gosnold three days a week and things like that. And you, so you're out, what, two days a week from the other provider?
By, South Bay was in five days.
Five days, so is, obviously, we have staff who's picking that up. But is that something that you think the students are getting the services they need? Is there something we need to do to help to increase them?
Families just got, have to now go outside. What was nice about having them in the building is it took the burden off the parents to get those services and they could have them right in school. So, and we could do a lot of the work behind that to help them get that assistance. Now we're relying on outside providers to, and it's not as easy for families and sometimes.
That bridge, you know?
So it's easier, when they work with us, it was just easier to set that up for them. And transportation was not an issue, they've been doing it right in school. So it does, it just requires a little more.
Legwork, okay, thank you.
Okay, moving along, Dr. Maitis.
Just to talk a little bit about that, I think that's consistent. We had several schools mention that we had Gosnold and, and South Bay. A few years ago, we had the opportunity to work with South Bay on a management grant so that we could actually have them come in and work in schools. And it was really for social work support. We talked about that, you know, I think when we, when we were actually implementing this, we started, we started to see the increase in social emotional issues that were happening in our schools. And we thought it was very attractive to try to get services from outside to come and support our schools on the inside. A lot of times, parents are reluctant to invite an outside agency into the home or it just makes it easier to have it at school. And it's really difficult to be able to offer service like this because, you know, these are, a lot, a lot of times are entry-level clinicians that come in. They're new to the profession and when we find a really good connection, we really want to keep it as long as possible. We've, we've, we've found some great stability over the years, but it's, I mean, we've been doing this now for about seven years. And it's, it's really hard to keep up the model. Because the need is so high and the students' needs change dramatically. Our school counselors and adjustment counselors are very specific, you know, dealing with school adjustment issues. When you start talking, some of the students that are involved with our outside agencies, there are other issues, family type of situations that they work with. And those are actually, they, they actually get paid through third-party billing. And that's how they actually are able to, to work. We have an agreement with some of these organizations that if a child needs support, they'll help them anyway, even if they don't have another way to actually pay through Medicaid or whatever organization. So we really try to work heavily to try to add support no matter of what your condition is. So there's a greater need than what we have support for. And, you know, these are social workers, they're not necessarily school counselors or school adjustment counselors.
Okay, moving on to, yes, now we have Plymouth South Middle School, we have Cost Center three twenty-two, and we have Principal Joe Murphy, Joe?
Plymouth South Middle School currently, can you hear me okay? Plymouth South Middle School currently serves six hundred and ninety-eight students in grade six through eight. We're now in our twentieth year of operation down at Plymouth South Middle School, believe it or not. People say a lot of times that they don't think school is that old when they go in there because it's still in really good condition. So we will continue to try to work on that. We have sixty certificated teaching staff, eight support staff. And I'm talking about people like guidance counselors, school nurse, school psychologist, math coach, literacy coach, et cetera. We have three administrators, the building principal, and two assistant principals. And we have forty-three support staff, that includes people such as cafeteria employees, secretaries, paraprofessionals, so on and so forth. So it's a hundred and fourteen total staff at Plymouth South Middle School. We're proposing a level service, service budget down at Plymouth South Middle School. In our school, we do house two district-wide programs. We have autism spectrum, spectrum disorder program and a life skills program. Maybe something that's of note is that our RAASD program is growing. There's a lot of support needed for the students that are in that program. And we're projected to go from sixteen to twenty-one students. I know five, five additional students doesn't sound like a lot, but they do have very high needs. And so if you review any of this, you might see that there's some slight increases, very slight increases in some of the special education areas. And really, a lot of that can be drawn back to that, to that perceived need. Our overall increase for the budget is three point three-nine percent, the bulk of which is primarily teachers' salaries increasing because they're going back to school, they're getting their master's degrees and so on and so forth. We do have, much like PCIS, a proposal to increase our science budget in technology engineering. Trying to keep the curriculum the same at both schools. And the need that's been proposed to PCIS is also the same with us. I would be remiss, much like most of the other principals that have got, got up here tonight and talked, if I didn't mention the PTA, Plymouth South Middle School's PTA is wonderful. They are people that are giving a lot of their time and effort and energy to not only raise funds but increase all of our scholastic programming. They're giving their time volunteering and they've done some great things. Just recently, for example, we had this great program through the Foreign Language Department where we had students from Central America come to our kids. And we were able to go across the street of Plymouth South High School and these kids sang, they danced, they shared their culture. Very well received, but of course, it came with a cost and the PTA totally funded that. And it was so well received, the kids and the parents have been calling the school asking to bring the program back. And so hopefully, if the PTA continues to do what they do best, we can do that sometime in the future. They fund our field trips and our buses and they give the teachers materials that we otherwise wouldn't have to make them better teachers and give the kids opportunities. And so I thank them for that. I also want to comment on the relationship that we have with South Bay and Gosnold. I think we've been very lucky in the relationship that we've built with them at Plymouth South Middle School. We have been very lucky to find some counselors come in and provide some tremendous support with our students. We have had stability with those counselors, they're working very well with our teachers and our families and our kids. And I hope that never goes away, Gary and Chris, because they have made some great positive impacts on, on our kids. And it removes and relieves some of the burden of the guidance counselors, the school psychologists. And so it's a great relationship that comes at zero cost at Plymouth South Middle School. We're also lucky where we do have a little bit of space and we rent it out to the Plymouth Area Collaborative Program, which helps to raise some money for the school. And we're able to put some of that money back into building use. For example, we have been able to take some of the fun, some of those funds and recently purchased some new chairs that will be coming into the library. The library chairs are twenty years old and they are falling apart. It's not uncommon for the kids to be sitting in a chair and we have to call a custodian because the screws fall. So I hope those days are behind us and we're happy to host that program as well. If you have any questions for me at this time, I'd love to take them.
Questions from committee members? Just again, a question about the science on page ninety-four. That hundred and thirty-four percent increase, that's the upgrade in the science program that we've been hearing about?
The Open Science, correct me if I'm wrong.
All right, thank you.
And we've been planning to have it self-middle this year. So it would be the second, the final year of pilot itself middle to put in the vault in the first year of PCIS. So it would be additionally asked for next year as well, for following year to make sure that the two-year adoption.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Maitis?
All right, we're moving on to our secondary high school. This is section four of the order presentation tonight. We're going to start with Plymouth North High School. And we'll have Plymouth North Vocational, Plymouth South High School, and Plymouth South Vocational. And then Mr. Costen will talk about regional vocational technical. And that's actually those out of district vocational. So we'll start tonight with Principal Peter Parsland, Cost Center three thirty-one, Plymouth North High School, Pete.
That's me, good evening, everybody. This year's drafted budget is a level service budget. It began with a revision of the fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty budgets. And then with our school improvement plan in mind, we wanted to understand where our needs were in the coming year and where we could be more efficient. We include the department heads, school council, and key stakeholders in determining our needs for the upcoming budget year. And while much of what we'll provide as a level budget suggests is built similarly to provide the same product to students from fiscal year twenty, there are some changes that we anticipate and we've been able to appropriately allocate funding to address those needs. We also work to find ways to reallocate funds to provide quality programs for our students that are in line with our school's goals to meet the town's high expectations for North High School within that level service budget. Some of the key points I want to point out from our budget this year. The academic lines are all in line with the level service budgets and we collaborate with coordinators from each of the departments on that. In the general education services budget lines, we were able to look at the individual budget lines. You won't see it on the, the department in those six areas that Dr. Maitis talked about earlier, but you will see in individual lines of more detailed budget. We were able to draft this year's budget to provide some of those services. We talked about the school improvement plan in March to try and provide some of the voice and the leadership curriculum programs to get in there. We were able to do that while keeping the whole general services supply and other expenses budget the exact same or lower than last year. So, so we were able to crack that and provide those services while also trying to allocate funds from what we had previous years. We also do hold the NEAS line, you'll see that at the end of our budget. And because of our self-study accreditation process is complete. And even with that, with that taken out of our budget, it is still level service with those three supplies, other expenses, as I mentioned. And then in athletics, we have the usual increase in facility fees as well as required pay increases for officials. And those are in line with the level service budget plan. If you have any questions, we're happy to take them.
How many students?
We have twelve hundred and eighty-nine projected this year, last year we had thirteen twenty-one. So it's a slight decrease, you'll see that in the per pupil expenditure in each department.
Any other questions?
Dr. Maitis? Moving on to Plymouth North High School Vocational, we have the director of the vocational school here tonight, Cost Center three thirty, three thirty-four, Cindy Sylvia, Cindy?
Good evening. Again, I'm the Director of College Career and Technical Education and oversee Cost Center three three four. At Plymouth North High School, in collaboration with Mr. Parsland, the CCTE department chair and instructors, we have three hundred and seventy-eight students currently enrolled in CCTE, next year, projection of three ninety-eight. We have eleven staff members, which also include paraeducators and support staff. The four CTT, CCTE programs also involved in this Cost Center are two technical programs, wood design and computer. So, and in between. If you have any questions on three three four Cost Center. We have a four point nine percent increase and much of that is due for salaries. But there is an increase in material supplies of trades, of the trades, which include pipe, copper, lumber, ductwork, and we'll talk about some of the other, but also repair and maintenance of the equipment.
Questions? Nope?
All right, we're moving over to Plymouth South High School. We have Principal Jim Hannah here tonight, Cost Center three thirty-two. Jim Hannah, Jim?
Thank you. Tonight, I present to you the fiscal year budget of twenty twenty-one for Cost Center three three two. The development of this budget has been collaborative in conjunction with our school council and input from our district-wide coordinators who are here this evening to meet our high expectations for Plymouth South High School. Currently, our enrollment is at ten thirty-eight. Our projection for next year is ten fifty-eight. In addition, we host two district-wide special education programs, one of which for students with behavioral difficulties as well as the second for autism disorder students. We are currently at one hundred and thirty-five staff members, which includes our paraeducators and support staff. As you've heard from other Cost Center managers, our budget is level service, in alignment with the rest of the school district. Any increases that you see are due to programmatic needs and increasing any costs that are necessary. Be happy to answer any questions you have about any details in our budget lines.
Not seeing any hands.
And we're going to Cost Center three three six, Regional Vocational Technical, excuse me, three three three, which is Mrs. Sylvia. This is Plymouth South Vocational High School, Cindy?
Cost Center three 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 is also a level service budget as was the Plymouth North CCTE budget and also done in collaboration with the department heads, Principal Hannah, and the instructors for the programs. At Plymouth South High School, there are thirteen CCTE programs and a current enrollment of five hundred and fifty-nine students with a projected enrollment of, again, five hundred and fifty-nine students. We have thirty, thirty-nine staff members, which also include paraeducators and support staff. And along the same lines as the increase because of salary, we also have an increase in the copper wiring and the electrical program along with lumber for our construction trades. And in the automotive, we have an increase in materials and also ductwork for our HVAC program and food and our culinary program. Along with that, we have equipment that with the new building had warranties that are now since expiring. So there'd be an increase in repair and maintenance for Plymouth South High School. And a lot of these increases, we're able to supplement through the revolving account that we use for our CCTE program. So if you have any questions concerning our CCT, CCTE budget at either Cost Center, we'd be happy to answer that.
Dr. Maitis?
Just want to highlight one area that we discuss around the table here relative to this program. We received recently a number of donations to the HVAC program for some significant equipment for the program. And if that wasn't donated, it would be a hardship to actually offer current equipment to have our students train on. So we're very fortunate to have some community support from local businesses where they have actually donated some significant, significant equipment to the program, which some of this.
In conjunction with our new HVAC teacher, Mr. Dages, and under the, the direction of his, of his department head, Steve Maderas, they're able to secure over seventy thousand dollars to our HVAC program. It's a vital piece as it's coming into fruition and to its maturity into the, into the program. And for these kids to really truly understand HVAC and how it works, we actually need that equipment, whether it be rooftop, air conditioners, which we are donating, brand new. So from the different areas, so we're very fortunate in that those people go out and, and support our program.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
We're moving forward with the Cost Center three three six, Regional Vocational Technical School, Mr. Costen?
Cost Center three three six, pays for the tuition for our students that attend the regional agricultural school, Bristol Agricultural. We have a forty-five thousand dollar increase for next year. And the primary reason is that we had three students this year, we will have six students next year. The rate for tuition is twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars per student. In addition, we also budget through the town, thirty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. In addition, we also budget through the town, uh, thirty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars for transportation for the six students. We actually send one of our, our buses that the, uh, Capitol was able to purchase for us, thank you, uh, to, um, drive the students up there, and we also share in transport to offset the cost students from Carver.
Any questions to Mr. Costin? Mr. Costin's presentation. Dr. Myastis?
Just wanna remind the committee that, uh, I think two years ago, we, uh, were in front of town meeting, and town meeting suggested that, uh, transportation for out-of-district vocational be inserted into the budget, opposed to coming to town meeting and raising and appropriating money through town meeting to actually accommodate for transportation. So, the reason why we have in addition not only tuition, but transportation is due to the request from town meeting to actually have this line item inserted into the school budget and not requested at town meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, moving along, we have our district-wide coordinators. We'll start with visual and performing arts. We'll go to technology, and then we'll do district-wide coordinator services. Uh, we have Cost Center 347, visual and performing arts, and that is under the direction of Mr. Mike Capel, and he's here, he is here tonight representing his department. So, Mr. Capel, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Mastis. Thank you, uh, school committee. Again, uh, my name is Mike Capel, Coordinator of Visual Performing Arts, uh, here to talk about the, um, 347 budget that is level service. Um, we developed the budget to, uh, the goal was, uh, to maintain a level service of a budget without, uh, an increase as much as possible. We have a two percent increase which is, um, to do with, uh, salary and contractual obligations. Uh, our, this budget, uh, is district-wide, K to 12. It does things such as, uh, elementary instrumental program, transportation, contracted services, puts on large exhibits and, and shows, um, and fulfills one of our, uh, key goals, which is to bring the learning that happens inside the classroom out to the community and connect the community, uh, to the visual and performing arts. And that would not be possible without a solid K to 12, uh, arts education. Um, it's pretty straightforward, but I'm happy to take any other questions.
Any questions on that budget?
Nope.
Okay.
Good evening. Julia Colby. I'm the Coordinator for Educational Technology, and as everybody else, it's a level service budget. You'll see a very small increase, um, that's doing software and contractual services. Everything else is, uh, level service. And any questions, I would be happy to answer.
I don't see any hands.
All right, uh, moving on to Cost Center 354, this is District-Wide Coordinator Services. Uh, this Cost Center is represented by Lisa White, and she represents the Coordinator's Office in Coordination for Services for the District. So, Dr. White? Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. I, I'm sorry, I, I- He, uh, this evening, Mrs. McLean was, uh, lobbying me to, uh, give him more time, and I, I just overlooked him, so I'm sorry, Mr. McLean. We're gonna go to Cost Center 362. Uh, this is, uh, technology relative to, uh, the engineering and networking of the district, and I'll turn it over to Alan McLean.
Uh, good evening. Cost Center 362, Technology Center. Uh, page one eighty-six of your report. Um, presenting to you a level service budget with a five-point-four percent increase. Uh, the increase is made up of an increase in our contracted services for both our data and telephone networks, and also an increase in supplies and materials due to technology equipment at Plymouth South High School. It's coming out of warranty at the end of the school year, and, uh, this will help us maintain the integrity of, uh, that equipment. Questions?
Any questions? No.
All right, now we will move to Dr. White. Uh, Dr. White, like I mentioned before, is in charge of the District-Wide Coordinator Services, representing all the coordinators in the district. Dr. White?
So, for Cost Center 354, uh, that represents four academic coordinators and two, uh, secretaries. And, uh, you've heard the principals mention throughout the evening that we support, uh, all of our schools in the district, so the budget, uh, office budget is to support all of the schools and the work that we do for curriculum. Uh, really, the only, um, piece of note is that some of the copy money had been moved to a, to a line that the administrative building has now for all of our copy machines, so that, that money had been transferred over. Um, the rest of the budget, uh, reflects level services, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the coordinator's budget? I don't see any hands. Dr. Myastis?
Yes, now we're gonna move over to Special Education and Pupil Services. We have Cost Center 301, which is Plymouth Early Childhood Center. Cost Center 335, which was their district-wide alternative high school program. Cost Center 348, which is district-wide student support, and we have Cost Center 353, which is district-wide special education services. We will begin tonight with the Plymouth Early Childhood Center, which is based at Plymouth Community Intermediate School, and has created a nice home for themselves, and we'll turn it over to Denise Tobin, the Director of the Program. Denise?
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm here, uh, Cost Center, Cost Center 301, um, for the Plymouth Early Childhood Center. Um, our current enrollment is two hundred and sixteen students. Um, we have a rolling enrollment as, um, children turn three and qualify for services, they can come throughout the school year. Our average increase in enrollment from October to June is around twenty-two percent, and that's been consistent over the past couple of years. We have ten classrooms that are all, um, staffed with special ed teachers and a combination of full-time and part-time paraprofessionals. And we also, um, service students through outreach, language group, and Head Start, and our speech and language OT and PT provide those services. Um, our budget is, um, it reflects the level service, and the revolving account that, um, is established through the tuition that our peers pay is what sustains the, um, the rest of our program. Um, our peers right now, we have thirty out of a hundred and eight peers qualified for free or reduced tuition. So, the, the number in our revolving account changes year to year based on that need, um, from our students.
So, the two sixteen includes the peers?
Yes. Yeah, we have a hundred and eight of, um, our students are peers. The rest are special ed students.
And Denise, you- How much money is brought in through grants that's helped subsidize your program?
Okay, so, um, we have two grants. One of the grants, um, over the past several years has decreased significantly, and that one is going away for next year. Um, it, um, it paid for a portion of a salary. And then, um, we have another grant, the two sixty-two grant, and that pays for sixty-three percent of one's salary.
Thank you so much. Uh, moving on to our district-wide alternative high school program, which is actually based in this building in the lower level, uh, we, uh, this is Cost Center 335, under the direction of Kevin Abatable. Kevin?
Good evening. Uh, I can be, uh, in public, Cost Center 335, on page one forty-five. Uh, this is a same-level service budget, uh, that reflects a five-point-sixty-one increase. Uh, that reflects the certificated salary, uh, increases. Any changes, um, in, uh, any of our working object lines? Just, uh, increases on the programmatic changes, uh, that we discussed from switching from a credit recovery program to a more traditional alternative program. Uh, we currently have forty-three students. Um, forty-three percent of those students are on IP's. A hundred percent are on free and reduced lunch, um, and we are a district, uh, cost-saving program. Uh, when we do take, um, some students who otherwise would be going out of district to some of those special ed programs that, uh, Dr. Myastis had, uh, spoke about earlier in the meeting, um, you know, we are able to take some of those to alleviate some costs for the district. Um, do you have any questions?
I don't see any hands.
All right, we're moving forward to Cost Center 348, which is District-Wide Student Support Services. Uh, this is in the direction of Dr. Sean Halpin. Uh, Dr. Halpin, could you talk a little bit about the spectrum of, uh, programs under your purview?
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Myastis. So, uh, this Cost Center can be found on page, uh, three fifty-two, and, uh, student support services comprises the general ed population within pupil services, and that is school counseling services, English learning education, McKinney-Vento homeless, uh, education and transportation services, foster care education and transportation services, um, attendance for the district, the supervisor attendance included in this budget, general ed tutoring services, uh, homeschooling, and NCAS tutoring. The, the student, the student support Cost Center reflects a lot of the unfunded mandates that Dr. Myastis referred to earlier in his presentation. You will notice an increase this year in the overall budget. Uh, it's eight-point-two percent of an increase. Uh, the overall budget's about one-point-three million. Much of that increase actually centers around the transportation of our homeless and foster care students, and you will see that those lines comprise the biggest increase. We also have an increase, uh, a slighter increase in our, uh, certificated staff and salaries, which would be our ESL instructors, our attendance supervisor. Uh, we have a halftime secretary shared between departments, uh, the director might, might salary, as well as the, um, tutoring that we provide. Just a couple of quick things that I did wanna point out, uh, before closing out my presentation. Uh, the line where the increase is the most is the transportation line, and, uh, the laws have changed, uh, in recent years around our homeless students as well as students in foster care. So, we'll see a dramatic increase in the foster care line and a dramatic decrease, or something, you know, a decrease in, in the homeless transportation line. That's reflective of the law. Uh, I won't go into a lot of detail around it, but I will say that it is going to, uh, continue to cost more money for us district-wide, particularly around our, our children who are in foster care. Uh, DCF, um, has a, a, a catchment area of about seventeen towns in Plymouth County. Our kids move in a transient, um, within those towns. We do no cost shares with, um, foster care kids. Where, where, uh, the McKinney-Vento students, we can cost share, but the law allows us to do that with towns that have, that have been displaced. Uh, and that, that really reflects the, the change. That's the reason for the change. Um, the, the numbers have caught up with the law now, and, um, I guess the last thing I just would say in closing would be, um, you know, we, we, we are seeing an increase, as we have in, in recent years, in the social, emotional needs of our students in the district. Um, you know, my, my department, uh, does its best to try to work on those with the, with the schools. I work in conjunction with, uh, Dr. Rogers, the special ed department as well. You heard a lot about the outside services tonight that we do provide our students in, in terms of therapy in school. Uh, we're, we're glad to be able to do that. It, it, it's becoming more challenging. Moving on, we're gonna continue to try to provide that for our kids the best we can. Um, I, I feel like this budget is, um, like I said, it's, it's, it's the best we can do from the circumstances that we have, and, uh, but if you have any questions about it, we'd be happy to answer them.
I, I do. Uh, when I first looked at the budget and I saw the decrease in McKinney-Vento, I thought, oh, wow, we have less homeless. So, now you just pointed out that that's not true at all. It's been a change in the structure of the law. Now, let me understand the foster care placement. So, DCF or some other state agency places a Plymouth child, let's say, in Brockton, uh, at the aunt's house or somebody's house. So, we, we are responsible for going to Brockton and picking up that child and bringing him back to school here?
Correct.
And then bring him back home?
That's exactly correct.
And that's where, that, that's, that, that hundred-and-twenty percent increase?
Yes. And, and that's the school of origin. Students have a right to remain in a school of origin. Uh, in most cases, that's, that isn't their best interest. In, in some cases, it may not be. Um, the, the protocol is that we would go up to about sixty minutes one-way, um, and, and DCF is, is pretty, kinda strict about that in terms of, if, 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 a lot of our students are four and five to sixty minutes away. Um, and, uh, DCF is the decision-maker in this case, although it's a collaborative process in how we determine best interest of, of schools for kids. DCF does make the decision. Um, they, they are not financially responsible. We are, and that really explains it.
All right. Ms. Haywood?
Um, I guess just going back to, I guess, um, some of the presentations with, um, HEDGE and PCIS, um, and some, um, Cold Spring, the, uh, ELL, um, uh, services. So, where do you see that?
So, um, yeah, just in the interest of the time, I, I didn't wanna speak too much about it, but I, I can give you some numbers. We've, we've gone from, um, about under, under eighty-five students who, who received ESL services in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, um, to upwards of one-hundred-and-sixty-five this year. On the books, we have one-hundred-and-eighty-eight this year. Uh, but that includes students who are, who opt-out students, who choose not to receive the service. Uh, that's a pretty dramatic increase, and if you go back, um, basically around the time that I, I came here, we were, we were about like forty, forty or so students, um, so, and now we're up to somewhere between one-sixty-five and one-eighty-eight. We have five schools that service our ESL students. Uh, we, we, we transport kids to and from those schools, too. That's additional cost, uh, if they're not living in the, in the, uh, district. Um, so, and, and my projections, although, many of these projections are hard to predict. I would say that, that the increase is gonna continue in that area. We've seen an early, um, increase this year already of our ESL students, and typically that happens in the January timeframe, so we may, we may see more of an increase. And, you know, Dr. Myastis discussed that at the beginning of the night. Uh, it's, it's definitely a need that we're gonna have to, uh, look closely at in the future.
Um, I think on that front, Ms. Haywood as well, will be, we've already had a number of meetings to talk about how we're gonna staff some of these needs. We do need to increase staff in this area, but it'll be through reductions in other areas of the budget that we work collaboratively with all the principals on, but there is a need in, for an immediate need right now. We have come up with a small solution for the remainder of this year. It's not adding a full person in any way, shape, or form, but kind of a Band-Aid, but we, we have a plan for the future, for next year. Once, this, this population is very transient as well, so it's, it's a tricky number to watch, um, but it's something that we're working on with the principals and Dr. Halpin, so.
Okay, moving on?
No. I just have, I just have one other, uh, point of interest for coming up for town meeting. Um, April Town Meeting, we will have an article on the floor to actually create, um, an account with the town to, um, receive state aid for foster care transportation. Uh, it'll probably, if everything goes well, it's possible that we could get about twenty-one percent of reimbursement for it. It's not fully reimbursable, but we will get some level of aid, but in order to receive it, we have to have an account established with the town. It'll be very similar to, um, how Chapter Seventy comes to the town and how Medicaid reimbursement comes to the town. The town will receive it, and it'll be income to the town, but we, we do, uh, we do need to create this, so we will have an article in town meeting to be able to accommodate for this.
Okay, moving on, Dr. Myastis?
Yes, tonight we have, uh, Cost Center 353, District-Wide Special Education Services, and we have Dr. Stacy Rogers here to present. Stacy, welcome.
Hi, Stacy Rogers, Cost Center 353, Special Education Services for the District. Um, my budget houses, um, district-wide special education staff, contracted services, placements, um, and a few, um, supplies and materials. Overall, my budget's a four-point-eight percent increase. It's a level service budget. Um, the increases are due to contracted services, which you guys have already heard a little bit about, um, such as transportation placement, um, and salary increase, increases, which reflect, um, our contract and stepped-in lane changes. I also just wanted to talk a little bit about, um, our federal grants, which Dr. Myastis had talked about earlier with Title I and IDA. Um, some of those grants are trending, um, slightly less than they had been in the past. Um, however, with our, um, contractual obligations, even a level-funded grant is actually, um, not keeping pace with our salary scales, which, that's why we're seeing some of the funds having to be switched over to the, um, our local budget. The state is working on a reimbursement, um, program for special education transportation, but that's not out yet. Um, hoping to see some, um, relief from that, but we'll have to see how that goes.
I have to tell you, I've never seen the line item go up one thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-nine percent.
Yeah, I saw that too. I'm not really sure why that is.
Okay. The numbers don't-
The numbers don't match, I know.
Match up.
This is where I ask my business manager.
Just one other point, uh, to, to bring up, which, uh, Dr. Rogers has a great deal of, of involvement with us, as well as, um, Mr. Mr. Costin. It's relative to Medicaid reimbursement. We'll, we'll see some significant structural changes to Medicaid reimbursement as, um, the way to qualify for reimbursement has changed. Um, it, it was initially supposed to create some level of, uh, ability to increase, but it looks like it's not going to be able to help us increase our dollars. It's gonna actually increase the time that it takes us to collect this information. So, what's, you'll see, uh, Medicaid reimbursement is a, is a revenue option for the town of Plymouth. Um, Medicaid, um, is logged in our offices, and the town of Plymouth actually will receive reimbursement from that log of time that our staff is actually, um, accommodating children with needs that qualify for Medicaid reimbursement. So, we will see a- So, we will see a structural change to that. We do, we are anticipating that Medicaid reimbursement to the town will go down as a result of the adjustment of protocol and process policy that we see coming forward. So, I'm not sure, Stacy, if I, if I presented that well enough, but if there's anything else, okay.
I believe I'm back on the agenda for December 16th to go over the Medicaid changes.
Mr. Costin.
I, I can address the 1,199 percent.
Oh, thank goodness.
The simple answer is if you lump those three accounts together, the out-of-district placements, what happens is that we end up adjusting our expended numbers and our budget numbers based on circuit breaker reimbursements. So, it's really an accounting function wherever those funds are budgeted. The state requires us to offset our placements with circuit breaker money. And so, it's really just a matter of how we budget and what we end up. The revised budget ends up, ends up matching what we expended, and it's merely an accounting function of where we have the greatest expenditures where we can charge against the circuit breaker. I can, that makes sense.
Any other questions? Dr. Maestis.
Yes, we'll move to the grouping of seven, which is our last group for the evening. This is Central Office Services, and we will begin with Cost Center 350, which is district-wide undistributed, and that is under the purview of Gary Costin. Mr. Costin.
Cost Center 350 is really a district-wide undistributed cost that really don't fit anywhere else, and there, the majority of them are contract issues for salaries and insurance for students. Now, this contract, I'm sorry, this Cost Center, as you can see, went down $326,000, which is really, again, an accounting function. I'm sorry, I'm doing this again. But the reason is, if you look at the FY '20 adjusted budget, when we built the budget for FY '20, we built it in FY '19, we didn't, we did not have settled contracts. So, we carried forward all of our anticipated contract salary settlements. When we are at the point when we actually locked down the budget to build the '21 budget, we still had about $400,000 in adjustments that we have to make for teachers for movement on steps and lanes. So, that hasn't happened yet. That's why it's still contained in the FY '20 as unassigned, but in '21, it's built into the actual Cost Centers.
Okay. Moving forward, Cost Center 351, this is Districtwide Accountability and Measurement, and this is under the direction of Karen Vannett. Karen.
Thank you. Good evening. Cost Center 351 starts on page 156 of report 352. My budget outside of salaries is primarily contracted services for data management systems such as Aspen, our student information system, our transportation software, as well as a few assessment programs. And as we've done every single year for the past few years, we're continually looking for ways to eliminate some of our ancillary programs and start managing data in different places so that we can get rid of some of these subscriptions, like we've done with staff attendance, and we've done with staff evaluations where we had separate programs to manage that data. We're able to move that data into Aspen itself and without a change in cost in our Aspen subscription. This past year, Aspen actually pulled some of its functionality that we were paying for an additional module for, like Google integration and online quizzes, a lot of instructional pieces for the teachers. They moved it into their core functionality, so I was able to stop paying for that additional module for Aspen. And so, moving forward, we're looking to implement online student enrollment as a benefit to our district and the community. It would save us a ton of time with data entry at the school level, but make student enrollment and registration easier, more accessible for our community. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope.
Moving on to Cost Center 355, Districtwide Central Administrative Services, and this is under my direction. Cost Center 355 is relative to the operation for my office as well as the school committee. You'll notice within this budget, there is the school committee secretary, there's also Massachusetts Associate School Committee dues, and all of the items necessary to actually run a central office administration that is classified as district-wide central office. This is where my salary is contained and other clerical staff that actually supports the district. There's a 3 percent overall increase to this account, and if there's any questions relative to any increases, I'd be more than happy to explain them for you this evening.
Okay. Committee members with questions? Districtwide Central? There are no questions.
All right, we're moving over to Cost Center 356, Districtwide Curriculum and Professional Development. This is under the direction of Dr. Campbell. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Maestis. Cost Center 356 is on page 171 of your detailed reports, and only a 1 percent increase over prior year. This budget comprised primarily of contractual obligations that we have within our district for curriculum development, course reimbursement, professional development, and things of that nature, as well as a small budget for professional development supplies. You will notice, as Mr. Costin noted at the beginning of the presentation, there are many lines that are, that are not funded. There's no funding to it, but you'll notice that there are other lines that have that. And again, that goes back to what Mr. Costin was saying about the function codes and the state adjusting those function codes. So, what we do is we identify a few function codes that are heavily subscribed to at this point of the year, and then we adjust them so you can see the actual expenditures once the year is ended. So, as, as that happens, particularly around course reimbursement, conferences, we don't know exactly which teachers will, you know, will take advantage of that, that expense, that opportunity they have within their contracts, so it's really contingent upon who comes forward. So, that's why those adjustments are made afterwards. But again, it's only a 1 percent increase over prior year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Campbell?
Just one more thing that I want to add, as Dr. Rogers stated, in terms of the federal grants, Title II A, which Dr. Maestis mentioned earlier, is our teacher quality grant, which is primarily teacher professional development. This has seen a $41,000 hit this year. So, we went from 165,489, excuse me, from 206,573 to just over $165,000 this year. So, not only is it, is it a decrease of $41,000, when you're looking at funding staff in that, it's actually a greater increase because their, you know, their contracts have those cost of living adjustments in it. So, this is something that we're, we keep an eye on, and we try to do as much as we can internally to support this, but it's something that, you know, we obviously know that we're, we take a risk when we don't have these funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No question. No question.
When you say take a risk, what's that by that?
In terms of the, it's more about the professional development that we can provide. Yep. Because again, it's, it's all about conferences, conference expenses, so it really limits the amount of opportunities that we can provide to our staff to go out. So, we work very hard, primarily through the academic coordinators, to find district-wide opportunities. So, if we're looking to promote something through literacy, technology, special education, we're really trying to do that as a group, and we're less able to allow for individual requests. So, we're really looking at it as a department more often than not.
Okay. Moving forward, we have Cost Center 357, Districtwide Human Resources, under the direction of Patty Frye. Patty.
Yes, the Human Resources Cost Center, there's actually a reduction this year. It is Cost Center 357 and page 175. While the Human Resources Department, really, the major focus is staffing, all the staffing are in the building budgets. The biggest portion of our budget is the legal services. Believe it or not, negotiations will open up again next year, so we need to maintain. I know, I have the same thought. And so, the legal fees we maintained, I can't believe it. With that saying, we did have a reduction because one portion of my budget is also for the administrative training classes that we send new administrators to, we send department heads, principals, assistant principals, to a consistent evaluation class so that our evaluations are, they all have the same message of what we're looking for. We anticipate a smaller amount of people are in those roles, so we were able to reduce that. Another area we were able to reduce is when we put a mentor on for administrators. That's also a line in here. And then really, the other big portion of this budget is the School Spring Online Application Program that we, that we live by in our district, so that's what it.
Any questions? There are no questions.
All right, we're moving on to the last three Cost Centers, and they're all under the direction of Mr. Costin, and I'll turn over the remainder of the presentations to him. We have Cost Center 358, Business Services and Operations, 363, Districtwide Solar Renewable Energy, and Cost Center 371, Charter Schools.
Thank you. Cost Center 358 is Districtwide Business Services and Operation. This covers some minor expenses for, for my office, but the majority of it is for transportation, crossing guards, school security, and school resource officers. In addition, utilities, with the exception of electricity. The majority of the increase is, as a result, you saw on the slide, which showed contract increases, contracted services increases, which are primarily transportation and utilities. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Costin on 358? Nope.
363 is our solar renewable energy Cost Center. This Cost Center covers all the costs for our electricity within the school district. In addition, it also now covers the costs for our, our lighting at South High School. As you know, we entered a lease purchase, which has been, has been extremely beneficial to the students at South High School, and the cost's being covered by savings from our, our energy conservation measures. As a side note, our battery is about to go online at South High School, which is, is a great accomplishment. And this Cost Center does not include the school committee's latest project, which we're looking to see if it's feasible, is for the parking arrays at South High School. So, we did not put any cost savings in for that, in anticipation of that yet. As you, as Dr. Maestis discussed, the solar panels are, output is, is starting to diminish. It's a small amount, but when you have 11 and a half million kilowatt hours that we're generating every year, in addition to the amount that we generate for the town, we're over, well over 13 million kilowatt hours, the panels do start to decrease somewhat. The other increase factor for this is that the utilities, while we're on contracts for 2021 for fixed price for electricity, the distribution costs from Eversource continue to go up. So, there's small increases, and I, and I think that we're going to continue to see a small increase every year going forward as a result of that.
Questions? I have one on this depreciation of the panel. So, both of you are giving us the, the information, this is something we expected, this is something that would happen. Should we ever anticipate that some year we're going to have a, a big cost, they're all going to deteriorate? I mean, is there, is there a formula here?
The formula is, it's, it's approximately, I think it's about a half a percent or percent a year that they, and they go, they don't go to zero.
They won't go to zero.
No. And over the lifespan of the 20 years, you're looking at maybe a 20 percent, 15 to 20 percent.
There's no crisis looming around the corner here.
No. I would anticipate before the 20-year period of installation, from, from the, you know, start to, to that 20-year period, that there will be some upgrade that will be proposed at the school department.
Correct.
That will have current technology that would actually increase the output, but I think.
To the benefit of the developers who own the field.
Technology is changing, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Okay, next Cost Center.
Cost Center, sorry, 371 is Charter Schools, Transportation, and that pays for 11 buses to provide transportation to Rising Tide and MAP Academy. In addition, one of our buses, the town-owned buses that we use to transport students to MAP Academy, that's for, for wages for a bus driver.
Any questions about transportation to Rising Tide and MAP Academy? I don't see any hands.
Tonight, we had the opportunity to hear from our Cost Centers and their budget highlights for this evening. I might remind this group tonight, the school committee and also Cost Center managers, that on December 16th, we will have a public hearing to start the school committee meeting. At that time, Mr. Costin and myself will address any notable changes that we would have to the budget. If we feel that something was revealed tonight that needed to change, we'll, we'll make that present, that presentation. We've had those in years past where we've had an amended budget and then voted on appropriately at this, at this, at this hearing. So, again, December 16th, we'll begin at 7:00. And I would also reiterate my comments to Mr. Helm, that we would invite the opportunity to sit with the entire subcommittee to review any questions that stem from this evening, and any other questions that you may have moving forward. So, with that said, Dr. Sorenson, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Ms. Bajer.
I just, as we sat here today, and everyone's talking about all the things that our PTAs do and all the, our grants and other things, I'm thinking that, why, maybe not for December 16th, but why we're going through the process with, for town meeting with the budget and everything, it might be really helpful to have some sort of three-year average on how much each school PTA brings in, and, you know, just to show them what, what our school budget could look like if we didn't have this. To be able to provide these wonderful enrichment nights, we'd need X, Y, and Z added to the budget. So, I just think it might be a supplemental material that would be helpful.
We could, we could, the annual fundraising summary reports, we could look at those if you'd like, we could.
Yeah, I think just, something like that would be, would be nice to have, and maybe even adding in some of the wonderful grants and things that people get.
And the grants, too.
And, and on that note, too, I think we even talked about this last year, adding in the cost of what our electricity and everything would cost if, you know, I think when people are looking to us to, you know, sharpen our pencils and everything, what we could kind of look at what we already have done to sharpen our pencils, just to kind of be a little proactive with some of the, the questions that we might get, to put our energy cost on that as well, because I think that that would be huge.
Absolutely. Relatively speaking, and that's precisely why I raised the point earlier, that the budget is 129, but Chapter 70 brings us down to 109, because a lot of people miss that point, that we get not much reimbursement.
Well, I think since it doesn't directly come to the school department, and we don't turn it over to the town, it's, it's kind of, it's revenue, it's, it's on the cherry sheet. So, it's just like Medicaid reimbursement. That's another area that we bring in a sizable amount of money, and it goes to offset the bills for the town, which the school department is the bill of the town. So, it goes to buying down the debt that has been created by these expenditures. So, to your point, there are a lot of things that don't show up in the budget, like all of the goodwill of the community, parents and so on, but there is also those monetary pieces that do come into the community that the average resident doesn't have a chance to, to realize.
Okay. That was a great presentation. I want to thank everybody who came here this evening. We were all very efficient, I appreciate that. We got it all done in one night, and I like that, too. Any, any other business to come before the school committee? I'm seeing no hands, and we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.